Just don't click out or we'll lose you at the top, guys. All right, so I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 25th at 7:30 PM. All public health permitting in the boardroom of 35 Leroy Avenue. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us for a special meeting that was rescheduled from another special meeting last Wednesday. The storm precluded us from meeting, so we hope everyone joining us is safe and healthy and that your loved ones are as well. We are meeting again via Zoom because 35 Leroy Board of Education meeting room is being set up for the primary tomorrow, which precludes us from being allowed in. Also, we just received final notification that all schools were up and had power this morning. So we were not able to guarantee that we'd be able to meet there. So thank you for everyone for adjusting and working with us remotely this evening on this important issue. Tonight is really Dr. Adley's show.
Pay for that. We'll take it back, please.
Dave, I don't think you're on mute. Tara, I think you're muted. Okay, we'll start again. Deb, did you get the motion or no? Okay, so I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 25th. All Department of Health allowances permitting at 7:30 in the Board of Education meeting room. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight for this special meeting, which was rescheduled from last Wednesday. The storm clearly precluded us from being able to meet. We hope everyone is safe after that storm. And we're glad to see so many people have power restored. The district has said that they will be communicating these plans out to the entire school community tomorrow. So anyone who can't join us tonight will also be updated fully tomorrow. We are meeting via Zoom tonight because the Board of Education room is being used for the primary tomorrow. So it precludes us from using that room tonight. We also finally got reassurances and notifications that all schools have been restored to power today. So we could not plan on meeting in those rooms. So we thank both the Police Department, Darien Public Works, and all the crews that made it to town to get us back up and running. And I thank everyone for their patience in joining us via Zoom again tonight. I much prefer the nine of us together along with all of our administrators. And we look forward to being able at some point to welcome the public back into the board meeting room. Tonight is really the superintendent's chance to put a plan out for the reopening of schools. The Connecticut State Department of Education did rule that it is the superintendent's responsibility to do so. However, here in Darien, we've always had a good working relationship. The superintendent wanted to meet with the board to hear comments, questions. I thank everyone who has reached out over the last couple of weeks. Please know your emails have been sent to the board and to the superintendent. There's been lots of ideas, considerations, and kind of thoughtfulness put into ideas. And so know that that has been shared with the board. The board will can ask questions tonight of the superintendent. And then we hope really at that point that the public has an ability to plan for what is coming in the fall. I think everyone, rightfully so at this point, needs a plan, needs to know what kind of is happening based on all the information we have at the moment and can begin to plan for their fall and their kids' education. With that, I will open to public comment and then I will turn it over to Dr. Adley to discuss the plans for reopening of schools. Joan, are you managing public comment again for us, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's any public comments this evening.
We have two. Abby Shiner, you are unmuted.
Hi, my name is Joe Warren. Actually, I'm Abby's dad. I'm using Abby's computer this evening because my computer is not working properly. I am a resident here in Darien. I live at 410 West Avenue, Apartment 108. I have been a resident of Darien for virtually my entire life. I am hoping that tonight's meeting will cover issues like what is the, it's the details that I am concerned about. In addition to the fact that I happen to have a daughter who is a teacher in the school system still, I'm concerned from her perspective. Those of you who know me know that I will spend the better part of the month of December interacting with a very large number of the students who will be attending Darien schools. And I have my own personal concerns in terms of what type of exposure there will be from these children. This is going to be, to say the least, a very tricky holiday season for all of us here in Darien. And we're going to have to think long and hard about how we're going to deal with it. But what I'm interested in are the details, and I would hope tonight in the plan, we will cover things such as what we're doing to monitor the quality of the schools themselves. We know that there are certain schools and certain rooms within those schools that have air quality issues. And I'd like some reassurances that those issues are being addressed and that the plan for reopening the school takes that into account. In addition, we're going to have to monitor very closely what students come to school and what condition they are when they come into the school and have to deal with the issue of what happens if somebody shows positive for the virus. What will that involve in terms of isolation? Will it involve isolating a classroom? Will it involve isolating specific students? What repercussions will there be for the teachers of those classrooms? And then for me personally, what are the repercussions?
Approaching time. I just have to warn you, you're approaching time and please wrap up.
What are the repercussions for the public in general? And how will the public be kept apprised of whatever issues arise during the school? I do want to state for the record, I totally support reopening the school systems. I think that remote learning has not worked well, has not served either the teachers or the students well. And so I'm anxious to see the schools reopen. But again, as I said in the beginning, the devil is in the details. And I would hope that tonight's presentation or whatever information is made public tomorrow will address those details. And as we get farther into this discussion, I will continue to communicate with both the board and the administration if I feel that there are details that are not being addressed appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Parent, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Sarah Parent and I live at 227 Hollow Tree Ridge Road. First, I'm grateful to the board members for your hard work in these very challenging times. I am grateful to each and every one of you. I did want to pose a few questions, much like Mr. Warren just shared. In discussions with many Darien residents over the past few weeks, there are a few themes that have emerged about the reopening plans as presented. First, would it be helpful for you to understand the district's reasoning behind these plans? The first concerns cohorting at the elementary level in the hybrid model is outlined in the July 24 document. Can you please explain why you think cohorting by grade level in the elementary schools is the best choice? There are concerns that this may make childcare more challenging. And it also seems that having entire grade levels in school on the same day does not lessen exposure in the classroom or allow for further social distancing. An explanation of why you feel this is helpful for many parents? I'm curious a little more about details of the special education scheduling and the inclusion services in the hybrid model. More details would be beneficial. One of the most prevalent conversations in our community is what happens when there's a positive case in a school? Who must quarantine? For how long? How will those students in quarantine access their education? What are the metrics for when a building must close entirely? Is it possible that you could close one or two schools but keep the rest open? Having answers to these questions may help a lot of us feel more comfortable knowing what we can expect. From Dr. Adley's email last night, it seems that there may be more clarity around these issues now, and I would love to hear these questions addressed. High school sports is another hot topic. What would happen if an athlete on an opposing team tests positive within two weeks of a game played against Darien? Does that mean the DHS team must quarantine? How would that affect fellow students in their classes as well as their teachers? I've also heard concerns about who will enforce mask wearing during games and practices and questions about whether DHS coaches will always see the same COVID-related professional development as the teachers. It would also be beneficial to hear the thinking behind having DHS extracurriculars happen remotely, even though most are small groups that could socially distance relatively easily. I have questions about what other options were discussed in terms of facility usage. Tents were discussed at the last meeting, but only briefly. It seems as though that idea is not being considered. Can you provide more details behind that decision? Did the district discuss using other facilities in town to allow for more space for our children? To be clear, I am not advocating for either of these solutions, but I think there's a hunger for public discussion about what options were looked at, but ultimately not chosen. My final thought and my opinion is that there can never be enough communication from the board, from administrators, and from teachers. This is always true for me, but particularly this year. The level of anxiety of both parents and children is high, and hearing from you often will help mitigate. You may never please everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Your connection is weak. So you may want to, you may want to submit those comments to the board so we can have them fully. I am getting some notices that we are capped. We have 300 people currently on Zoom. That may be the Zoom cap. Please know this meeting is being recorded. And so anyone who can't get in now can certainly, can certainly watch the recording. If there's public comment and you are at the end of the meeting and you've made your comment, please allow some room for others. And/or anyone can email the board and all thoughts and comments will be shared with the board and the superintendent. So if anyone is sending you messages that they can't get in, please assure them that we are open and want to hear from them. Mrs. McGaughan, any other, Dr. McGaughan, any other public comments at this time?
Jocelyn Lancy, you are unmuted.
Hello, Jocelyn Lancy, President of the Education Association. While I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Darien teachers, our message is not about us. I've stated before, Darien teachers have wanted nothing more than to be back in classrooms with students. Our message continues to be about safety as well as our ability to provide the best quality instruction regardless of our circumstances. If you're choosing to send your child to school, whether at full capacity or in a hybrid model, wouldn't you want your child to go back to conditions that are absolutely safe, not just as safe as the district can make them? If you are choosing to keep your child home, I'm assuming that you would want your child provided with the most robust and dynamic teaching that the district could offer. I don't think that any plan we have been shown up to this point brings us to a place where we could honestly feel that a safe and robust learning environment is being provided. When it comes to safety, please remember that if teachers' health and wellbeing is at risk, so is the health and wellbeing of our students, their families, and all community members. Even in a hybrid model, we are worried that the district cannot truly guarantee the safety of our buildings. Here are just a few areas where we still have some questions regarding safety and our ability to stop the spread of COVID-19. There are a number of small rooms that have been established for classes such as IDEA and Special Education Services that have no windows or proper ventilation systems. Another issue is that that has not been addressed, is that we cannot consistently follow a cohort model while also servicing students with IEPs. Special teachers are still being asked to go into all classrooms. We are not sure how to properly protect students on buses, and the teachers have grave concerns about removing masks to eat lunch in the classrooms. What are we doing to ensure that students and faculty and substitutes are not initially entering the buildings as asymptomatic carriers of COVID-19? There are many other questions that we have not been, that have not been answered in regards to keeping schools safe. And we will be sure to bring them to the board's attention when we have the opportunity to get into the schools and see our workspaces. I'm not sure if the public knows this, but we are losing teachers. We are losing them to early retirement, medical leaves, and unpaid leaves of absence. Some who've left just cannot come back into working conditions that put their health at risk. Currently, teaching remotely is not an option for any Darien public schools teacher. This is because the district insists on utilizing live streamed instruction to reach students who are choosing to learn from home. The DEA's questions regarding live streaming from the last meeting have yet to be answered. We continue to feel that this is the least effective way to instruct our students who are at home. We have offered suggestions and ways to support a robust online curriculum that also includes live teaching. Those suggestions have been rejected, and we are truly disappointed. We believe that parents and the board should demand a better option to live streaming and bring teachers to the table to help create a plan that families deserve. None of us want to be in the position of making a choice about how to go back to schools. I don't have the right answers. I'm not sure that anyone does, but we can start by asking the right questions. Is being as safe as we can make it safe enough for our students and families? What consequences are we, are you willing to accept to rush students back into a building? Please don't make me have to come back here in a few months with a much more somber message. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No, that's it.
Okay, is there any from my technical wizards out there? Dr. McGaughan or Chris, who's been a Zoom wizard for us, is there any way to remove the 300 participant cap? As a reminder, we would be well beyond capped at 300 if we were physically meeting as well with social distancing. But I'm trying to see if we can get as many people in as possible.
Not that I can see right now.
Okay, so then a reminder, because I'm sure we are all getting messages about people not being able to get in. One, please, in a meeting where we need to respect that we are, we are meeting at the proverbial table. Two, we need to remind people and anyone that this meeting is recorded. They can watch it. I will do my best to repeat that as many times. Anyone that's on this meeting and knows someone who can't get in, please let them know that this is recorded. And like I said at the end, if you have made your public comment, you may want to consider, you know, once you are done, letting other people get in to make public comment. We will do our best to have everybody have a chance. And we'll even hold it a little longer, a public comment, than we might, than we might typically be in so that as people sign off, other people can sign in. We are, we are doing the best in the environment here in. With that, Dr. Adley.
So good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for your time this evening, particularly given the past week that you've all endured. If I may, I would like to sort of just share the tenants of the plan, some of the specifics, and then just go from a question and answering sort of dialogue. And hopefully we can address many of the questions that have been asked this evening. And if we don't address them on the way, we can even bring them up again throughout the discussion. I do want to thank, in particular, the last week or so, there've been changes made to the plan. And those changes have been made in light of the feedback, both from discussions of the Board of Education, parents who have communicated with us, meeting actually with our union representation, both of the teachers and administrative unions, our Director of Health, David Knopf, our medical advisor, Dr. Keneffek, our Police Chief Anderson, and the Central Services staff. So from what was published, the actual rollout of the plan has changed in light of all the feedback that I've received over the past two weeks or so. And as been said tonight, and that is correct, there are still works in progress and there are still parts of it that need to be addressed and circles that need to be closed on some issues. I will say that I'm not going to advocate a plan that puts the safety of our students or staff at risk. Just not going to do that. Having said that, we all know within the climate within which we are working, but I'm certainly not going to. The revision of this, of this plan reflects as the top priority, the health and safety of our students and our faculty. With that, I will just put up, share my screen if I can for you. Let me know if you're being able to see that. It looks like, it looks like we can. Deb, can you see that, Richie? You're just, just because you're on the, on the screen here.
I can see it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So the last time we were here, this is the basis of, of the plan. So I'll skip through some things, talk some things more than another. I think you know that there's three plans. We have to prepare for three particular models. That's still the case. And the question is, which model do we choose? How do we rule that out? And we'll talk about the different aspects of it.
Alan?
Yes?
Before we go further, I have concern that we're going to be criticized for not hoping, holding an open deliberation. I understand it's a technical requirement, but I just think we as a board need to agree. I have no desire to push this off, but I also know people are really excited to hear what's happening today. Or I think, just think we need to talk about the fact that the meeting is capped.
What's your question, Joe?
The meeting being capped at 300, I don't want us to be, it's not then an open deliberation necessarily.
So under the governor's orders at this moment, the meetings do not need to be open. We are trying to make it as open as possible. If we were meeting in person, the room would be capped, socially distanced, well before this. 300 is probably more than we could allow in any space in Darien currently. So I don't see that there's a FOIA problem. I certainly understand people's frustration, and we'll try to get this meeting out and have the recording up as soon as possible. And I think the superintendent communicated today that he will be communicating the plan to parents tomorrow. But I'm not sure unless you have a suggestion that I'm, and I'm willing to hear it, of what other steps we could take.
I don't, without knowing the capability, I'm imagining there's probably other, other platforms that might be able to hold more than 300. But I am also sensitive to the fact that many people want to hear this tonight and that we're all assembled. I just think we need to, as a board, going to this willingly and agreeing that we understand the constraints we're under.
Okay, so then I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Ritchie, are you happy moving forward?
Well, obviously, I'm not happy that there are people waiting to listen to our meeting, but time is of the essence. And I think these discussions need to happen as soon as possible. The meeting is recorded, and if we can get it up tonight so people can view it tonight, that would be the preferred method. But I don't, at this point, we need to start hearing the plan. We need to start talking about the plan, and decisions need to be made. So I think time is of the essence, and we need to continue with our meeting tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Seedy?
Yeah, I mean, it's imperative that we move forward tonight, but this is a major mess up on a technical aspect, and we gotta do better going forward. So let's move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
I think when you balance the two considerations, I think we do have to move forward at this point. But there has to be a way going forward if we're going to have to do a Zoom environment, to find a platform that can allow for more than 300 people, because this is a matter of great community concern. So we're going to have to do something to make this more open for more people in real time. But I'm comfortable going forward. Thank you.
Mrs. Stein?
I'm comfortable going forward as well.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Maroney?
Yeah, I echo my colleagues' concerns and critiques. It'd be great if everyone would be able to see, but unfortunately, they can't. And I think time is of the essence, so I think we need to move forward.
Mr. Dine? Let me circle back. Mr. Brown? And Mr. Dine? Okay, I offer my hat in the ring. I think that, I think that we are, we are managing in multiple environments the aftermath of the storm for which electricity was not restored in all spots until today and under the situation of a pandemic. So I don't know that I would call it a major screw-up as much as managing the best of what we can. And I certainly think we can always shoot to do better. But I think under the governor's orders, we are operating correctly, although I share everyone's concerns that I would like as many people to have a chance to view this meeting as possible in real time. We will work to get it up on the website. But I do think what's most important for families in Darien is that they have a plan that they can start to plan for, for their children as September is fast coming. And people who work and people who have childcare issues need to actually know what the plan is so that they can actually make arrangements for their family. With that understood, I would say we move forward, and that appears to be unanimous.
Tara, sorry to interrupt. Duke is not able to unmute.
Okay, so let's go back and let him unmute and Dave Brown.
Can you hear me now, Tara?
Yep, there you go. Got you.
I agree with the whole conversation, and we just have to, we have to have this conversation this evening. But we've got to figure out the technology, because the technology is going to be with us for a ways into the future. So we have to figure out a way to allow everyone to participate. But we need to keep this one going.
Mr. Brown, can you now unmute?
Tara, as I'm thinking further, is there a way to possibly do this also on Facebook at the same time or on YouTube? Can we use that technology? And/or can somebody look and see if this can be put onto a Zoom enterprise platform, which I believe allows for more users? And supposedly it can be done in real time.
That's a question for our technical people. Mrs. McGaughan, Dr. McGaughan?
Hi, we can not immediately. Zoom is extraordinarily popular right now, so they're a little bit backed up in terms of switching over to a large meeting format or webinar format. But that is certainly something that we will obviously try to do as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, Mr. Brown says that he believes time is of the essence, and we are working to make sure that he can unmute. Okay, so with that, it looks like everyone, while we all have expressed concern and we'd like everyone to hear, there's no one who has said that we should not continue. So with that, I will allow the superintendent to continue.
Thank you, and certainly, certainly will do our best to address that movement forward. The in-person model for one of the learning models that we have to prepare for, essentially, I think people know it, that's really, everyone is back in school full-time, essentially. There's opportunities for professional development. We've obviously put in place sanitation and hygiene protocols, address, continue to address the curriculum in terms of what the standards that are going to be met. We have to have a modified process for daily arrival, and we've built in SEL into the time. But that's, everybody is coming back full-time. And so the hybrid model, essentially, it would be a combination of students being in school and students being at home. Students would participate in the schedule for remote learning days and be in, in the classroom for other days. So essentially, what this might look like is a student may be at school for two days a week and at home for two days a week with remote access. And as was mentioned, that would be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous activity. So yes, students would be able to come into the classroom by cameras for periods of the lesson and other periods of the lesson that the students would be doing independent work. And those would be detailed, particularly for the elementary school, middle school, middle school, high school would be synchronous the majority of the time. So for remote, we did hear from parents about the defined expectations around the synchronous instruction. We had to sort of provide a platform in which we've gone to zoom for that and other platforms that you can hear about, and embedded time for ESL. So the state did come out since our last meeting with some metrics for determining which level you could be in. And this is sort of the seven-day rule on average per 100,000 of population. So we're around 22. Essentially, that would, that would, for the last sort of seven days, it's been, the most recent information was published of about three cases in Darien over a seven-day period. That would need to get up to like 14 in order to go to hybrid essentially, or 35 for total remote, total remote learning. So we were just doing the mathematics of it. That's kind of the, that's kind of the benchmark a little bit. And we're closely with the Department of Public Health on this, our health officials. So we're around three cases. Again, that would suggest you can come in fully, fully come back to school. And the in-person model, and I would have to go to about 14 for hybrid and 35 for remote. That's not just as simple as that, but that, that gives you a sort of sense of the guideline. These are some of the, some of the data for the surrounding counties. And you can see that for a field of 2.5 fairly low. So here's basically the plan, which puts people, the main thing that people would like to see, right? And making this determination, again, we did so even though the data suggested you could come back permanently in person immediately. I do take into consideration significantly the staff that are working in the building. And clearly, the students are the first priority, but staff and students, it's hard to separate those when you're talking about the health and safety of everybody. And so that was taken into consideration. As I look at this, I look at this as a transition model into the full in-person, right? Or a sort of onboard practice. So September 3, the recommendation and the decision is to move forward with the hybrid model. And we can talk a wee bit more about the hybrid model, discuss it. That's what it's going to be. September 29, I think is the day after the off before, we would be going back in person at that date. That would be the plan, provided the data didn't suggest otherwise. But that would be the plan for, for the first three weeks. It gives a wee bit of opportunity to test some systems. It gives a bit of an opportunity to gain confidence with our staff and to make any necessary adjustments along the way. I think that's a reasonable way to enter in. It just gives it people a wee bit of an adjustment period before going full in-person. The hybrid essentially would be two days, two days if I look at the different grade levels. The elementary schools would be going in Monday and Wednesday. Half the class would be on Monday, Wednesday. Half the class would be out. Half the class when they are out would be, I'll call it zooming in, but for live instruction for periods of the day, for some periods of the day, and for other periods of the day, there will be independent work. So they would be going Monday, Wednesday, and the other half the class would then come in Tuesday, Thursday. And the first people who were in Monday, Monday, Wednesday would go out Tuesday, Thursday. So it'd just be a switch, and it would reduce the class sizes completely in half. Friday, as it's always been in any of the models, Friday would be a half-day for remote instruction and for cleaning the buildings and professional learning in the afternoon on a Friday. The in-person model is all students come in, the students, you know, there's an after provision, an after provision, students could participate via the camera. Again, at the different levels, middle school will be predominantly online through the hybrid model, as would be the high school. Middle school will go Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. High school at this point will go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, as their hybrid model. So I think this, this tries to address again, some of the concerns that I've heard along the way, both from parents and our staff, and to try to be reasonable. We've worked closely with our public health officials. We also agree that our data suggests we come back, but also agree with transition in this particular type of model. I'm not drawing this out for a full quarter. I don't think we need to do that unless something changes dramatically. This also gives a, gives a wee opportunity to gain confidence in the system, to see if cases do increase significantly when we bring the children back. So why is that to play out a little bit? But I'm confident that we can return in this particular model. And the desk facing forward, I think, we go with this the last time that we were going with the APA recommendation. But under the hybrid model, clearly, it's going to be greater than that, and it'll be closer to 60 that will be able to gain in the hybrid model. I wouldn't read everything here. I think people can sort of see some of it. Obviously, the mitigation strategies includes a lot of plastic glasses providers throughout the school, both for staff and for students in the classrooms. The high school, we're doing the best we can cohorting at the high school. Cannot be done truly in cohorts. The middle school, we talked about the takeover schedule, the elementary, the grade levels. And we'll talk more about that in a second. So staff have each have two masks, two clear masks also. For the use, we have face curtains for students available also. The cleaning, the hygiene will be increased significantly. We did just receive, I have not really, I would literally just receive the audit for the indoor air quality, and we'll be looking at the recommendations in there and addressing the recommendations if there are any. There are, had to be mentioned about some rooms, and we have communication to what we're doing about those rooms. Whether the students are moved or what, what we can do for the, our circulation. And the buses will be near capacity only when you're in the hybrid model, clearly, it's going to be. It's not going to be half, but close to half, right? The split, I didn't say the split, the split is basically around A through K and L through Z for the alphabet. People will be assigned seats in the bus in terms of how to get on or how to get off. That will be controlled. And that's in fact, and that for each run. As special education, we tried to commit a commitment to inclusion or least restricted environment. Our intensive learners opportunities will attend four days a week, even in the hybrid model. So essentially, in the hybrid model, our intensive learners will come in Monday through, Monday through Thursday. And that's the same as the ELP. ELP will come in Monday through Thursday, as is the practice right now. Social emotional learning is built into the actual schedules themselves. Staff will receive as part of the professional development before school. I mean, staff have to receive professional development on all of this. Yes, it's not easy, and it's not the, it's not the normal way of teaching. So it's important that we do provide our staff, professional learning opportunities regarding the cameras in the classroom, regarding social emotional learning, regarding the curriculum. So those are things that are underway, and it'll be part of the open and professional development plan to include that professional learning. We did make some changes to the, to the schedule. So the first day of school would be the third and the fourth. And these just show you the professional development days for the staff that will be front-loaded. Topics that we will address, which you expect to address, everything from technology to curriculum instruction, health and wellness, and special education, the educational practices. So those are typically what will be built into professional learning. Communication, so upcoming meetings, just to give you a little bit of a sense. Staff later this week will, will meet with the staff, give them an opportunity to build in. Because they're understandably, staff to be on this tonight, they'll be understandably, how are we rolling this out? What do we have to do? So it's important that they get a comfort level for that. For parents, we'll have meetings at 17 to 8:19 for each of the, each of the buildings, at each of the building levels to give a sense of operationally, what's the schedule for elementary school, middle school, and high school. We also have scheduled for support services this particular Friday. And there'll be two meetings for support services. One will be for ELP at 12 o'clock. And one will be for the specialized programs that, I think that's 10 o'clock in the morning, we'll communicate that to parents. So staff will have an opportunity this week, parents will be next week, but also support services are two special meetings on 8:14. There will be a meeting on 8:17 where we will have our medical advisor, the director of public health. And so that will be a sort of general meeting, but we'll have resources, R2 touch base, specifically about the health and wellness issues, should people have questions about that. I don't know, people will, the district website will be released with the reopening. It's sort of released at the moment, but on Wednesday, we'll populate within all the information that we have available for the reopening, and that will address those couple of areas there. You can, we'll have an archive of communications that we've had of frequently asked questions, what the learning models are, what the plan is. So it'll just be sort of one snapshot. And for that, we'll continue to communicate with our school community on a weekly basis here, both from here at Central Appleson on a weekly basis. Principals will continue to communicate as well from our special services department. I will say, I do think it's important, I think you've sort of, certainly have communicated this to the community. I do think it's important that we move forward tonight. I think it's in everybody's best interest. It was discussed at the last board meeting. And while I gave a little bit of a buffer to my parents saying by the 14th, that I think it would be most advantageous if we walk away tonight with a plan that we can communicate to the staff that are to the school community in general. I think that's particularly important at this time. The related expenses, we have more details on this. Should we want to break some of this down? But this is currently where we are at the moment, at a million four. We did submit the ESA grant, and that came to just over 300,000. So if we get that, it would come off this, but that just gives you a sense of some of those categories. Should you want to discuss it in more detail, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. And that very quickly sort of concludes the presentation. I'm happy to give most of the time to questions. In terms of, I'll address this now, I guess, in terms of what do we do if someone, a staff member or a student has COVID or is in contact. The Department of Public Health shared some information with us today about specific, here's what you do when. We do have our director of nursing, Alicia, that's also here at the moment, if we want to address that. But I'll open it up to questions. If someone wants to reiterate that question, I'll be happy to defer to Alicia. But there's very, there's very specific guidelines of what we have to do under those scenarios.
Tara, I have a question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure Alan is done.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking okay to, to, at this particular point, just open up for questions. I haven't left anything deliberately. There's more details, obviously. People, the board would like to ask questions, certainly address those. I just heard today that football will be deferred to. Everything's changing, as you know. And by the way, that this is really this onboard sort of process, transition plan based on the best information we have at the moment, that obviously could change. But it looks like football will move to the spring at this particular point.
Okay, I'm going to pause for one minute for questions, because Mr. Danine and Mr. Brown need to be made co-hosts so they can participate fully. With that, Katie, do you want to?
Sure.
Ask your question?
May I just, sorry, sorry. Sorry, can I just ask Christopher, just to give Mr. Brian and Mr. Danine co-host? Can you do that?
I can't do that with my settings.
Okay, I'll have the back guy do this.
Or Joan can. Katie, do you want to go ahead? Because I think your question's.
Sure. Dr. Adley, can you talk to the threshold slide on number of cases? It, it talks about within 100,000, a population of 100,000. We are a population of around 18,000. How are you looking at a broader, how are you assessing that threshold?
So we're just, I'm just using that the population is 22,000 here. So for every 100,000 in the seven-day average, for every 100,000, you have to be in order to go back to school in person, it'd be less than 10. So for 22,000, that's going to be 2.2, basically 2.2. So 2.2 for seven days, an average of 2.2 for seven days is 14, basically is 14 days. And right now, the, right now, the, for the past seven days, I think it was three cases. So you're going to have to get the 14 cases before you would come out of that yellow slide and into, well, come out of the yellow slide and into the orange slide. So you have to get the 14 cases. And in order to do that, and when you get into the red one, you gotta get like 35 there, there. So you basically, you basically have to get about five times in, like we're getting that our cases resemble right now.
Does that answer your question, Katie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Can I?
Off the screen, Jerry. I need to see it. Okay, Mr. Burke?
Good evening. Dr. Adley, other than the concerns that you mentioned from staff and from parents that you heard, was there any specific data that you relied upon in making the judgment to go from a full start to a hybrid, then converting to a full start?
So it depends on whether you define data, but I think the board asked me at the last meeting, what was my thoughts on it? And I think at the time, I was honest and said, I think the data would suggest that we could come back full-time. But that's not being cavalier about it. I just believe that that's what the, the data suggested. The qualitative data that I took under consideration, I also tried to work with my colleagues in the local area here in terms of what some of them, some of the surrounding schools might be doing. And what they say one time versus another time, sometimes we all change a little bit. But for the most part, I tried to get into, we tried to work together with, with some of our model. And honestly, I took into consideration the qualitative feedback from our staff and from our parents. The data that we had looked at before, we had surveyed people, we've done a number of surveys. That had been built into the reopening plan in terms of the design, essentially. But over the last couple of weeks, in the end data that I looked at, in addition to the data that's provided here by the Department of Public Health, was really more qualitative in nature. And trying to be, trying to be respectful of that, and just trying to create a bit of space for a natural transition and a reasonable transition to occur. I tend to think if things are reasonable, it might resonate with people. And I think this is certainly, certainly reasonable, taking into consideration everybody's potential concerns.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Thank you. So just to be, so what you're saying is even though the data medically points to a full reopen, because people have addressed some concerns, you're going to the hybrid model for now. And just a follow-up question on the indicators, are we just going to go on what's happening here locally? Are we just going to go on what's happening here locally in Darien? Are we looking at it at the county level, are we looking at a state level, I'm just thinking, we have teachers that will be coming into Darien from all over the state. So I want to just be clear, what data we're looking at when we make a decision to go to full in-person learning, thank you.
Well, I do, I do think, Deb, thank you, I do think that not just that the data, just looking at it clearly, I do think that there's some merit to giving a given, given the plan and the opportunity to play out a little bit to see, uh, do the cases rise? Uh, have we done the mitigation strategies well, gaining people's confidence, both the parents, the students and the staff? I think there's credibility to that, and um, that that makes sense. Alicia, our Director of Nursing, myself, work very, very closely uh, with our medical advisor and with our Director of Public Health here in Darien. This will be looked at holistically, both from a county point of view, uh, from a Darien point of view, it came up, uh, it came up potentially on one of the questions earlier, uh, that doesn't sort of show up here a little bit, but it could potentially where you could end up with potentially a full grade level or a school or something closed versus um, just everybody doing the same thing. And that would only, that would take place by looking at the data just collectively and trying to triangulate the data uh, with our public health officials. And that would also potentially include looking at attendances and what the reasons for absences happen to be. Uh, so it's not just straightforward, let's just look at Darien, let's just look at the county, it's going to be a collective, both quantitative and qualitative uh, decision-making process.
Mr. Maroni?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Adley, um, for all the work, and and I really love the idea of having the website with one-stop shopping and a frequently asked questions page and the written communication going out from you and the principals and the special education, uh, thank you for that. My my first question on this is is on the hybrid cohorts, so I think we've heard a lot from public comment tonight and and a lot of letters that we've had on how did you determine the cohorts by grade and did you look at alphabetical and, um, you know, I think especially for for working parents, I think having alphabetical would ease that, because if we, if you think about it this way, you could end up having kids in school Monday, Tuesday and home, home Monday, Tuesday and home Wednesday, Thursday, and it's very difficult to go to work if that's what your your schedule is. If it was alphabetical, it would maybe easier to manage if you only had two days of of children. And I realize that schools are not childcare, but they end up being a de facto childcare for working parents, so could you comment on that?
Yeah, um, I don't know if I made it clear or not, Mr. Maroni, um, that that we are due by alpha, A through K, L through Z, uh, for all of for all of the schools, so we're trying to make an effort to at least bring some alignment, that may not be perfect, because some will take the schedules, uh, but that was an effort to as best as possible to actually address that, and three of the schools will be actually with the the same days, Monday, Wednesday, two, or sorry, not three of the schools, the elementary and the middle school.
So can I just stop, because I don't think that was clear, and I have the same question as Mr. Maroni, and I I want to have people listening know that. So what you're saying is it's not grade level? The cohort of your classroom might be grade level, but the day you attend school is based on your alphabet, no matter what grade you are in. And Mr. Maroni, you and I are on the same page with the question, right?
Yeah. That is correct, yes.
Okay, so then if I have three children in elementary school and my last name starts with A, they're all going to school on the same day. And if I have, you know, two children at the middle school, they're going the same day, and we're and we're trying the best we can. If I understand you, that elementary, middle and high school will match as best it can, given population and numbers.
All right, as best we can, the high school at this point is going Monday, Tuesday, then Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, so high school might be a little different.
It might be a little bit different, but we're doing the best we can to actually, again, that's that's an area of feedback that we heard, and we try to be responsive.
Because I will say, I thought the board got some pretty, um, very reasonable, well-thought-out letters on that, and I think some board members had that same question. So I think that's a big thing to highlight, that you will attend based on your last name.
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Maroni, did I cut you off?
No, no, that was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Janine?
Hi, thank you, Dr. Adley and the administration for all the ongoing work and effort. So as part of the information that's going to come out, um, I I think to the point of some of the public comment, the devil is in the details. Will you have some type of grid that would help people understand if the student tests positive? Or the teacher is aware that a student did not come in because they tested positive? What are the protocols and how does it work? And and how does it affect the rest of the students, the teacher, the school? I think from what I'm hearing, people really want to understand what those protocols are and how they work.
So the 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 simple answer to that must believe is yes, and we will actually, uh, with our public health officials, be adapting the State Department of Public Health guidelines. I actually just came out today, and this may be a good opportunity just to defer to um, my Director of Nursing, Alicia, uh, just to share a wee bit of example. Because honestly, if you were to ask me now about one, I would have to go to that, I would have to go back to that, look exactly, because there's there's different variations, so I defer to Alicia.
So and I sent to all to all board members, because Cave just sent to us right before the meeting, the State Department's grid, so I have not read it fully. It is a change, Alicia will probably know best, but all board members, you should have that grid in your email.
So we did review this today, Alicia, myself, um, and our two health, public health officials, medical advisor and Director of Public Health. Alicia, do you want to just sort of talk to some of the tenants of it that gives some people some reassurance and direction?
Sure, so, well, there's several, there's several questions that were asked, so I'm going to see how I can do. Um, the first is if a student has COVID symptoms when they're at home, so they call the attendance line in the morning and say that that their student is out due to, due to a fever and a cough, and and they're concerned about COVID. Then they will be, uh, you know, they're asked to stay home. Um, and then we will start looking into our attendance from the day before and doing some of our own in-school contact tracing, whether it's classroom, lunchroom, uh, school bus, transportation. Um, and we'll be calling both David Knopf, the Director of the Public Health Department, as well as um, Dr. Kenefek. And they will help direct kind of where we go from there. The the guidelines are based on close contact, which is, can, which is defined as being within six feet of an individual regardless of mask wearing for longer than fifteen minutes. So in each of our classrooms, we'll be working to ensure that there's a seating chart, so that we know where the student was seated. And for, you know, depending on the age group, you know, elementary age, because the kids are probably not staying seated, like maybe a high schooler might stay seated in their classroom, they will, it's likely that all students in a classroom in the elementary level will be receiving a call that we are uh, asking them to stay home while we wait for information on whether or not we have a case of COVID in the school. Um, so the, if somebody went home from school and they were fine all day, and in the evening they were showing symptoms, then we ask that parents will call right then, not wait until the morning, so that then we can go ahead and start our calls the night before. So that will be important information, we'll be, we'll be doing that, we'll also be taking, uh, you know, from the attendance line, calls that come in regarding students who are not feeling well, they will be receiving calls from our nursing staff to uh, get more information around why they are out absent. If a teacher hears from another student that they have an absent, an absent child, and and they say, oh, they're at home because they're sick, they have COVID, then they can call the nurse, the nurse will then do some investigating, same thing with the travel ban, um, and the travel restrictions. If someone calls, uh, or a teacher is made aware, or we are made aware of a family that has traveled and they have their children in school, then the teacher or whoever should be calling the nurse, and the nurse will then be doing, uh, asking questions of the family. And we will be asking them to um, remain out of school for the fourteen days. Uh, there's been some questions around the testing strategy for that, and uh, you know, the idea for testing is, is, is not, the public health officials are asking that we do not use testing as a strategy for having kids return to school or having teachers return to school. And even um, for, for children that have, or a staff member who has tested positive for COVID, um, you don't go back and get another, you know, they were doing where they were, do a test, and then twenty-four hours later do a second test, you get two negative tests in a row, you can go back. The CDC, the Public Health Department has pulled back that recommendation based on um, their viral studies and have, you know, said now, if you have a positive test, you're to remain home for ten days. So we'll be keeping track of all that attendance as well for anybody who tests positive. So there's a lot of information in these three sheets that came from the State Department of Health, um, describing different events, if they have symptoms but not close contact, if they have symptoms and they've had close contact. And then um, the last one that they put in was if they do not have symptoms, but that they've also had uh, close contact with somebody with COVID nineteen. There's recommendations for each of those situations. Um, and then anything that doesn't fall within that category will be discussing with our local health officials, um, to be sure that we are following all the correct guidance.
Alicia, could I just ask them to Mr. Janine's point, and this is a pretty dense document, I mean, we got it so late that I even had, really had a chance to group, but could this be something on the frequently asked questions page? Because I think people are going to need time to read it, understand it.
Right.
Go through it, and I think it's probably a pretty important document, um, given that it's going to govern returns and what.
Right, my thought is we put this up, and then we also put scenarios, you know, you're you're at home, you know, different scenarios around what happens, what happens when, um, you know, and and uh, we could sit here and dream up all the the things, and we will do probably the most common things, and then uh, you know, so that parents have a better idea and staff have a better idea of what will happen if somebody's in school and they're they're showing symptoms of COVID. They will go to an isolation area, they won't be taken to the nurse's office, and then kind of where things will go from there and how it will be communicated um, to to whether it's the communicated to a class, to the entire school, or to the entire district.
Okay, thank you, other board questions, Mr. Seeny?
Hi, um, thanks for taking my question, uh, just, I I do want to put out there, I'm very sorry to the community that we didn't meet, um, you know, the threshold of having a meeting that everybody could watch, and we will do much better as a board going forward, I will help ensure that that happens. Um, but as I go on, um, Dr. Adley, could you talk to the qualitative data? And I look at the chart on page seven and see that we're, you know, as a county, about twenty-five percent below the maximum threshold on the on the low-risk category, that yellow category. And then how did you then add qualitative data? You know, so basically what I'm trying to get to is what qualitative data made you start with this hybrid model? Which the expert data, you know, shows that we can easily, based on, you know, where we are as a county, um, you know, go to in-person learning. It just, would like to hear more about that qualitative data, uh, because I don't think as a board, we've seen any tally on that or much, but tally on that.
No, but that's, John, that's a certainly a fair and good question. The data is very clear, if you're just, if you're just doing the data, you can come back. When I, uh, when we met with our public health officials, um, they were actually in support of a transition in some way. This is a very relatively short transition, um, when I met with uh, the administrative union and talked to them, when I met with the teacher union, talked to them, there was clearly some concern about health and safety, uh, so the qualitative data I'm talking about is just some of the, uh, that feedback, um, and some of the feedback of parents and parents. But essentially, it was just taking, it was taking that information, um, and and looking at it in light of this particular data, which is pretty straightforward. But it seemed to be a reasonable step to take for people, remember, we, I think sometimes all that includes itself, we forget we're in a pandemic health crisis. And anything we can do to mitigate uh, some of the exposure, to gain confidence of people and transition in, um, I think would be helpful. So again, it really came from communications and meetings I've had since since last we spoke.
So just just as a follow-up, when we look at September twenty ninth, I guess, please?
Yes.
Are we, are we still going to be looking at qualitative data, or, I mean, is this a hard restart? Let's assume the the quantitative data doesn't change, I mean, or we, is this kind of a move? For lack of a better term, can the goalposts move without the data moving?
Uh, well, I wouldn't say the goalposts couldn't move, John, because it seems to move every day. So this is the plan now, based on the current climate that we have, environment within which we're working on data with the, within which we're working. If the data doesn't deteriorate further, otherwise, the intent of this plan is to go in person on the twenty ninth. That is what we we plan to do, now, I'm not making a disclaimer depending on the data, but but if if there was a, this 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 gives an opportunity to play out, if there was a plethora of cases, um, I'm sure we'd be wondering what we're doing and what would be the best thing to do, but the intent of this is to come back, that's, that is why I'm being definitive about that particular date, um, that to tell people that this is a state of readiness to come back full time, uh, I don't know what we learned between now and then, but my intent at this point would be to bring it, uh, bring us back full time at that, on that day.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCann, did I see your handoff? I see Duke, I think Jill had a question, and then I'll go.
Um, thank you. Alan, um, I've gotten a couple of questions about protocols of different types, and I know that I think you're still in the process of defining a lot of protocols, so I'd like to name a couple of them, and perhaps you could just outline some that we've already defined and others that we're still working on. So Duke mentioned early the protocols, not only for what happens when a student's identified, but for the contact tracing and where we are on actually defining what happens with contact tracing, and then how that's communicated, which is not uh, outlined in that addendum document, that's one. I've gotten a lot of questions about cleaning and how that works, um, and how we are balancing cleaning and cohorting, meaning that if students are in on Monday, and then the next group is in on Tuesday, are we cleaning between cohorts? Or are we having people go on on Monday, Tuesday, and then would we not clean on Wednesday, and then have people go in on Thursday, Friday? I know that's not how it's set up, I've just, these are some of the questions I'm receiving. And um, well, I think with protocols, I'll leave it there.
Actually, very quickly, some of those, just to give you context, cleaning is happening throughout the day and the evening also, but um, generally throughout the day and certainly overnight between those particular classes, doesn't matter which which cohort coming back or uh, which group from A to K, L to Z are coming back, it will be cleaned anyway, um, the same is for the buses in between the runs, it'll be done. Contract tracing is worked out with the Department of Public Health on ourselves, uh, we'll delineate what that is. But we've had some discussions about that, I would have to defer to Alicia just to say exactly what what that looks like from a contract, contract tracing point of view for the community, but that is a discussion that we've had and that we will be, we will be conducting. But Alicia, do you want to talk about it quickly or no?
Sure, uh, the contact tracing will, we will be, the school nurses will be assisting with that um, in the school environment. And then the contact tracing is really something that happens through the Public Health Department. So anything outside of of the schools will will be done through the Public Health Department in conjunction with our nursing staff. So we'll be, the likelihood, what happens is, we will get the information, you know, before the public health, the state public health department. So what's been happening is there's about a, you know, four or five day lag uh, from the state health department in reporting to the local health department. from the state health department in reporting to the local health department to start the contact tracing. In fact, by being in school, some of that contact tracing will actually happen earlier. Because we'll be informed earlier than the state health department, health department about, about positive cases. So we will be assisting the Public Health Department in the contact tracing with schools and, and where they, you know, where the student has been, whether it's been in an elementary classroom or high school classroom, you know, if they've been getting in a sports team and, and all that. And then that information in conjunction with the Public Health Department will determine, you know, who is asked to remain home for the 14 days while waiting to see if they develop any symptoms or you know, or, or having a negative test or a positive test. You know, whether they need to go get testing. The, the document that came out, the addendum five with all of the three different events have, they kind of talk about, you know, a lot of testing. So that will depend on what's happening in the community as far as the availability of testing and how rapidly that's coming, coming back to us. So you know, I don't really have all the answers, but we will be doing our own contact tracing in the school and then that will be shared with the Public Health Department because they really are the people who will be doing the contact tracing out in the community and and, and we'll be, you know, asking people to stay home should they have been within a, you know, in that defined close contact of six feet for longer than 15 minutes, regardless of mask wearing.
And Mrs. Ritchie?
Thank you. So Alicia, just following up on that, I mean, the contact tracing is complex and I have concerns about it. A kid has a cough, is that enough to isolate him or her and send them home? And then all of a sudden the cohort is needing to also quarantine? And also, do you have enough resources? Because this could become very cumbersome. I'm hearing now people are going to be calling off hours to report potential COVID cases. Are people answering the phones after hours? Are we then starting contact tracing immediately? Who's doing that? Are we doing that with the Department of Health? Is our nursing staff doing that? I'm just, I'm very concerned that we're, we're going to have a kid cough and the next thing you know, we're going to be contacting 20 families and 20 families are going to be quarantined.
Alicia, before you answer, Jill, can I just ask you to mute? We're getting a little bit of feedback. Thank you. Go ahead, Alicia.
Okay, so in, we still are working out the systems about who is going to answer the calls at night, but we will be, you know, we'll be addressing that as soon as we possibly can. A student who has a cough, you know, one symptom would not necessarily warrant all of the contact tracing for a cough. It would depend on all, what, what all is going on if they had an exposure. If they have a cough and they haven't been exposed to anybody and haven't traveled and, and don't meet other criteria, then they, we probably would ask them to be evaluated by their doctor. If at that point their doctor felt that they, their cough warranted a COVID test or warranted further, you know, that they decided that they had COVID, then, then we would go on the diagnosis. So it really depends on the situation and what we're seeing. You know, if a student came in with a fever and a a new onset cough and they're saying, oh, things don't smell right, or I can't taste anything, then that would be, you know, more concerning. That student would be, you know, isolated and asked to go, go home. And then we might be doing more of a, of an immediate, you know, we think we have a case of COVID, we're going to, you know, close that classroom down for today while we wait for more information, information from the doctor. And then also consult with our local health department about, you know, how long the classroom should be closed and should, do we need to close other rooms? So it'll be a lot of coordinated effort between not just the school and the school nurses and the administrators, but also our public health department.
And Mr. Maroney, did I see your hand go up?
Sorry. So I think for me, I'd like a little more clarification on the hybrid. I think, I think we all understand in-school learning. I think we've gone through and understand remote learning. Hybrid is another new type of learning. And can you just, and, and I don't quite understand what that is and how it's going to work for the students who are remote versus the student, obviously students that are there will have the teacher, but the remote will be a live stream of the class. And can you just go into a little more granularity of that?
Sure. So one of the changes we did make, well, I'm just describing the model, but at one point we had the kids, the students still in the class in this model. And over the last two weeks, we actually separated them. As you would probably hope we would separate them, you have, have the kids in and have the children, have the students. So if the students are in the class, they're, they're getting their, I'll call it their regular education face-to-face with their teacher and it'll be spaced out. Now, when they come, if they were to come back, just mention that, I'll just take this opportunity to mention this. If they were to come back, they'd be coming back, obviously. Both sets of students would come back into the classroom, so to speak. There would be different spacing under that, should we have to transition back in again. But for the hybrid model, you would have half the population in front of the teacher. And you would have half the population who would be home for two days, doing remote learning. And they would be, as we are this evening, with a camera tuning into the classroom, not for, not for the entire lesson. And that's something that changed out, again, based on feedback and modifications these past two weeks. We scaled that back a little bit, but in terms of there would be designated times, morning meeting, small group instruction, other parts of the day where the students at home would be live streaming into the classroom. But also we delineated a time where they have to do their independent work. Once a lesson was communicated or shared or otherwise, there's designated parts of the day where students are doing independent work. So there's parts of the day where they will connect right into the classroom. And there'll be parts of the day where they'll be doing asynchronous work in terms of work set during, during that class time to actually do independent work. So it'd be a combination of both essentially, Dennis.
I have a couple of follow-ups to that.
Sure. And then I want to get Mr. Dean in because I realized I skipped him.
And so my, my other question with that is with schools opening on a Thursday into a hybrid model, Thursday, Friday, how are we going to acclimate especially the youngsters who are new to school to who are in the Monday, Tuesday class, number one. And my follow-up question to that as well, and I don't want to be second guessing your plan. But was there any thought into doing a Monday, Tuesday, clean Wednesday, Thursday, Friday class? And to, to allow that there's a cleaning in between the two classes, the two groups of children going to school?
Yes, there was some thought into that in terms of Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, take Wednesday off. We thought that Friday actually may be, we go more conducive and responsive to our parents essentially. That was one of the considerations that we took into, into the, the, the consideration. We didn't want to, to miss a Wednesday and have a long period between students potentially not being in the actual classroom. What was your first, what was your first one of Dennis? Sorry, just.
First question is just the opening of school. So you're Thursday, Friday, and you may have kids who are not used to, not, who haven't been in the school system before. And how are they going to get acclimated?
So we're looking at those, we always had that Thursday, Friday at this point as a half-day for students and a half-day professional learning for the staff to just sort of transition some of the students in. So one of the, half the class essentially would, would come in. For some of the students, half the class, grade levels would come in on Monday and half the class would come in the next day at the high school. At this point, it's looking like they will do a full shortened schedule on the Thursday and Friday, just like to orientate yourself to teacher. We will just look at those two days again in light of this hybrid decision, just to make sure that that actually makes sense before we actually communicate it. But essentially half the population will be in Thursday and the half the population will be in Friday. How we transition the other half on the Thursday is, is still a bit of open discussion, but it's not going to take long to sort of close that.
Okay, Mr. Dean?
So thank you, Dennis. Good questions. Answered some of my questions. So Dr. Adley, I, I think early on a question came up about space. I, I just was recently on Long Island and there seems to be tents being set up on a lot of school campuses. So we have some portables. You know, are you comfortable with not needing anything additional in terms of spates or tents? I know you'd said tents create a security type problem, but we go back to full learning as we go into the fall, you go into the flu season, you go into colder weather, creates all kinds of other problems. And then to the point earlier that Deb Ritchie made, from a nursing standpoint, do we have what we need? You don't have to answer that this evening, but let's just, you know, we're here to support what you and the team needs. So I would just constantly want to update that you, you have what you need and have access to the people you need.
So, so the tents, again, that's, that, that was a point brought up actually by the board a couple of times. So we revisited again, that issue again this past week in fairly, for detail. I can say that this is a ministry of recommendation not to have the tents and that they're not necessary and that they would prefer not to have them basically K through eight. And that we can make the accommodations where we need to make those accommodations, we feel comfortable about that. We are using some of the portals in a different way, so that, that is true. The areas where we might actually use it is at the high school. I will definitely trip up there tomorrow to see where that possibly would be relocated. And it appears it would be in the courtyard area. And then I don't know what you call it, but I know where it is. It's up to say that the soccer field where the, what do you call it, where the little garden is, sort of speak, up and, up and, up top a little bit. There will not be use as classroom space. It'll be more at the high school. It's very hard given the size for kids to space out. So it'll give them an opportunity more so to space out. We also talked this week with the police chief in terms of safety and security. I'm very concerned about that. If we can keep those tents potentially in that location, then I'd be more comfortable about that. But we're not looking for instructional spaces necessarily. We also have the plans for, for kids can take their mask breaks. Staff have worked, administration has worked that out. So we did look at it again and the area where we think we may actually install a couple of the, potentially at the high school.
Okay, Mr. Burr?
Thank you. Dr. Adley, as I consider this hybrid plan, at this point, we're talking about 17 or 18 instructional days before going back full-time, when then the hybrid model becomes mute. If you determine that it's necessary to continue with the hybrid model as opposed to going full-time, will you reevaluate how the instructional days are structured, if you will? And I'll, I'll just let you answer that.
Yeah, yes, I'm not just, like, I'm trying to give a sense of, it is intended today to go back then. But it's, it's something that changes significantly. I'm going to have the health and safety of our, of our students and staff at the first decision. So if something jeopardizes that, just because we're saying we're going back on it, on this date right now, I'm not going to be shy about coming back and saying like, well, we have to change that disposition. And this is the reason why we would have to change it. But so given the data that I have now, given where we are, that's, that's the plan that we have. But as you know, everything is fluid at this particular point, but I thought it was useful at least to give a sense to everyone of when you can expect, given the data we have now, when you expect to come back, but you'll forgive the disclaimer just based on the change in, just a change in sets of circumstances. So I'm not, it's not going to be, I'm not going to be immune to coming back and changing that if I need to.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Thank you. So I was hoping we could maybe talk a little bit about FF-CRA and Jocelyn touched upon it a little bit and it's something that I'm concerned about. Are we giving teachers a date that they need to notify the district in terms of whether they're taking leave, they're going to retire? So that we have a good idea of what our, of our new staffing requirements will be going forward and you know, just touch upon that if you can. Thanks.
I'll just defer to March, right above you.
So about 35 teachers have reached out to me with concerns about medical conditions that would prohibit them from coming back. We have been having conversations. Depending on the outcome of the meeting tonight, I'm planning to email them to tell them that we'll be posting anticipated openings for all those areas in which we might have a teacher not coming back. I don't want to shake things up too much, but I agree with you that we need to be prepared. But the Americans with Disabilities Act requires an interactive conversation and those do take times, but we're plowing through.
Deb, is there a follow-up to that? I saw your hand up again.
No, just the, the number 35 kind of jumped out at me. So I'm just concerned is that if, if we are faced with that many teachers, are we able to then find that many teachers to take their place?
I don't believe that there will be 35 teachers who do not come back to work. I think that there will be a majority of those teachers who will, we will be able to accommodate with some reasonable accommodations.
Mr. Maroney, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah. Another question I have is on grading. So is, is grading going to remain the same? And, and will we be modifying curriculum and or testing, frequency of testing to be, to change with the new models?
So essentially grading with anticipation of coming back will remain as a normal grading system. And I'll let Chris and Mr. Temper just touch base about the assessments that we have planned.
So with local assessments, definitely, we have some guidance in our plan about pacing out assessments slowly and spending the, that initial time focusing on re-acclimating to school. But when it comes to the larger assessments on what we're working toward, there's not too much information from the state yet. And I do sit on the assessment and accountability committee for, for the state. So I'll, I will know that firsthand when that's decided. But to the, what we can do right now, we are definitely taking all that into consideration with curriculum and pacing. Starting this Wednesday, we have team, teams across all content areas and grade levels really focusing on mapping out, especially those first few weeks of school, which will be focusing on, on the hybrid. But we have to be pretty thoughtful as to how we do that, considering we won't have all students in class at the same time.
Mrs. Stein?
Alan, can you just clarify that half-days on Fridays, are those only during the hybrid period or are they in all three scenarios?
They're in all scenarios, Ms. Stein. They're in all, all the scenarios.
Can, I, I would like to follow up. There was a comment made by Ms. Delancey. And, and I want to make sure I got it right. So if I don't, someone out there correct me. But then there is not, there's been no plan put forward that provides a safe and robust learning for teachers and students. Can you, can you speak to that comment, please?
Well, I think we always have a, we always have a curriculum that provides a robust experience for the students. If we're, I know we're talking about revision of the curriculum and that is what was taking place right now as part of it. And there's been other curriculum work that has been done, but the, the majority of the plan and at a teacher level has happened at this particular point. Chris, I don't know if you want to talk anymore about that, but.
Yeah, I would, I would add to that, that the curriculum work that happens in June, actually, in addition to what traditionally happens in June, the curriculum leaders and department chairs anticipated that we might have a less than traditional start to the year. So some of that work began in June. The department chairs also provided a plan as to if we did not start in a traditional way, what would they need to do in August? And that's what we're starting this week. And we also have those three additional days of professional development to support teachers and being able to deliver that curriculum as we start the new year.
Okay. And then one other, there were some questions about special education scheduling. I know that we as a district have committed to least restrictive environment. But that does come into some conflict, conflict with cohorting. I have seen other plans that are purely cohorting and maybe are, it would appear on paper, a more restrictive environment. Can you talk a little bit about our plans? Why it's strong educationally and why, how, why and how it's serving our students?
So, well, first of all, we were, just to repeat some of the things we are doing, but particularly for intensive centers, we're doing that four days a week, even in the hybrid model. We understand the need to, to do that. We're, we will be four days a week. There will be cases where that ratio may not happen just because of the circumstances. An example might be ELP. We may not get all the, I'll call peers. An example might be ELP. We may not get all the peers. So that potentially can restrict that. There potentially not too much in this environment that we can do about that. But certainly within some of the other classes, I know that some of the services are going to happen, that some of the services will have to go into the classroom or, or again, students come out to receive those services. So that is a part of it. I recognize that. Surely, if you want to speak any word of that, just about the model, feel free, Chris.
Thank you. I can hear you. Just to add to that, I guess, we are going to continue in person during those times as well as when it is remote. That our children will be provided the same opportunity of LRE as if we were in school. We've taken into the safety of any kind of students who are going in to make sure they have the proper PPEs, the proper personnel who are supporting them. And we can comply with all the health standards while we're still pushing in for services or if children are coming out of them. So we are not planning on compromising that at this time.
I think, I think those learners probably are pleased to hear that after a long spring. Mrs. McCammon?
Sorry, it takes me a minute to unmute. Thank you. I actually would like to build on the special education topic, please. I have two comments and a question. My first comment is, I'm, would ask that the district think carefully about how to standardize our expectations for service. I don't mean the services themselves. Of course, those are still individualized. But as, as we reflect on how remote learning went in the spring, while it was extremely difficult, and we're grateful for the hard work of staff and administration, that it's clear to parents how, what they can expect. I know we have to comply with IDEA, but how that happens, particularly when we're in hybrid environments, can be difficult to understand. My second comment is to make sure that we are upholding the fact that the district is the one who needs to manage compliance. There were instances where parents felt that they needed to advocate for, oh, I want to have some speech. Can we do it? Can we do it live? Again, it was a difficult circumstance. So I'm not looking to point fingers backwards. I'm just looking for us to say going forwards, that we're thinking about being proactive in our, in our work with parents. And then my question is more specific, how are you defining intensive when you talk about which students are eligible for a four day week?
So we're looking at our students who are in the specialized programs, our DLC learners, our ALC learners, and our Excel learners. Those cohorts are small enough, some of our classes are as small as three children. Our largest might have eight students. So we're confident we can have safety practices in place and have those students in four days.
Thank you.
I saw another hand, but I lost it. Mr. Maroni?
It wasn't my hand, but.
All right. Well, now it is.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the assessment with Chris and what I'm concerned, concerned, I don't know if it's the right word, but I'm curious about of how we're going to deal with having half the class in, half the class out, and having the, the students be at different levels within that class. And some may be, need remedial instruction, and some may be at grade level or advanced. And I think that's going to be really difficult to, to work. And how, A, how are we going to assess? I mean, maybe it's too granular, but how are we going to assess that? And then B, how are we going to work going forward in this model?
I think that's a great question. And it's, it's one of the new challenges of, okay, now we thought we had a handle on remote learning. Teachers knew how to instruct well, well in school. And now the next layer is, and now can you do both at the same time? So it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable question. And it's definitely a place where we understand that there's going to be questions. We are going to provide some professional development to help teachers through that in those opening days of school. But there is going to be a learning curve as to how, how do you ask questions? Are you asking questions to not only the students that are right in front of you, but can the students that are on the screen also chime in? And the way that we're trying to build some of that is not in, in, with great instruction, not entire lessons are the teacher talking to the class up the whole time. So we're trying to build on opportunities where even those students are in front of the teachers, we are trying to provide instructional opportunities so the students are learning, how do they actually use a device when they are at home while in school with the supervision of the teacher, if that makes any sense. So to create some groups that are mixed between kids that are actually in class and kids that are home, receiving the same instruction to try to bring some meaning to that. When it comes to the assessment as far as taking tests, that's a different layer to, to the puzzle. But I think you're asking more about the, the formative assessment, the day to day, and how do you meet the needs of all students that are in front of you and not in front of you at the same time. So that's the start as to how we're going to manage that.
Mr. Burr?
You know, when I think about these assessments and, and how you're going to consider it, it occurs to me that this is a whole new world. And when you say professional development, who's an expert? I mean, who do you even go to, to teach our teachers how to do a combination hybrid live student environment when it's never done before? So where are you going to find the, the answers to give to our teachers?
That's a great question. It's a, it's my Teddy Roosevelt quote of do what you can with what you have where you are. So we have to grow with the, the new learning that we have, because we have learned quite a bit on how to teach well remotely. And I think it was, it might have been Mr. Maroni that said, well, are you going to review this after? Or no, it was your question. If you're in hybrid and then have to stay in hybrid, are you committed to this model? I think we've shown in the spring that we're willing to grow and adapt and change to make sure we're doing whatever we can to meet the needs of the students in front of us. So to answer your question directly, we're going to rely on the talents that we have within the district, because no one yet is a master of, of teaching hybrid. We have great masters of teaching remotely, and we have master teachers in class. But we are, we're trying, this is a, a new approach for sure.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to reiterate and be pragmatic about this. It is a whole different new world in terms of, like, I'm looking at this ET-like camera in front of me. The staff haven't really been doing that before. It's different than what, it's different than remote, where they're pushing into the homes. It's a whole different thing. So let's not pretend that we have got it all together, because, because we haven't, I'm just being honest. But if anybody can do this, I have said from day one until veteran Darian, and it was, it was the thing that attracted me particularly, right, is the talent of the staff. If there's anybody who can, who can work it out, and can do a tremendous job at it, I believe it's our staff. I'm not minimizing the challenge. It is difficult. We're going to have to partner strongly with our, our parents and seek their assistance in that. But I appreciate both gentlemen bringing it up, because I don't want to just be dismissive of it, or, or say, well, teachers can just do it. It's as simple as that.
Can I just add, we do have two, there are two specific things that are happening as well. We have the Vanguard group at the high school, which is our group of teachers who are becoming the teacher of teachers on, using the iPads as an instructional tool. And we also have a group of what was going to be 50 teachers, and now it's 60, K through eight, teachers and administrators who are participating in a workshop called the Chromebook infused classroom. So they are becoming the experts there, and they're going to be leading some of that professional development as we open the year. So we certainly have a plan. But we're, we're planning on things with the tools that we have and knowing that we're going into a whole new world of, of instruction.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So Chris, just building on that a little bit, have you looked, I guess, what existing content have you guys looked to, to utilize? Because there is content out there. There is online learning. There's homeschooling. So have you looked at any of the existing content to help build the content that we need here? Is, are you just using your own great minds to develop the content?
I'll say what puts us in a wonderful position is we had, have outstanding written curriculum. So when we talk about the content, we're looking at what are we going to prioritize with that content? So that's the base, the start of all of those questions. And in an ideal world, we would know where, where we're going to be expected to end based on what the expectations are, and what we typically call either high stakes assessments. But we don't have that. So right now, we're using the standards, and we're using what we think are the most critical standards, and those that repeat year after year, and making sure we build those skills as deeply as possible. And also looking carefully at, when do some of those standards return? Because we have to not only make the decisions as to what's important, but if we are strategically putting something to the back burner, when are we bringing it back? And when might students see that again? And how can we be prepared for that, knowing that they might not have had the same experience previously? So it's, it's certainly complex, but we are fortunate to have a great written curriculum, and we have standards that help us make the decision. So that's the, that's at the heart of, of what we're doing.
Mr. Janey?
Thank you. That answered one of my questions. I, I will say, Dr. Adley, I think the last couple of questions have been a good conversation. But Jocelyn's comments at the last two meetings do give me pause for concern. And I know there's a lot of work going on, on a daily basis and working with the great team of teachers we have. I would just ask that, as we talk about the social emotional learning of our students and the safety of our students and our teachers and our admin, that we talk about the social emotional well-being of our teachers and make sure as a community, we acknowledge that they, many of them have students at home, and they're trying to figure out that aspect of their lives, too. And then I do go back to make sure whatever resources you need, to Deb's question, that, that we hear about and that we talk about, because we're here to support it all.
So, Mr. Janey, I actually very much appreciate those comments. I'm a firm believer you can't have socially, emotionally safe schools for kids without having socially, emotionally safe schools for adults. I will say that, as I have shared, this plan significantly, in my opinion, is a significant change from where we last spoke, and particularly to be responsive to our students and our staff collectively. And it thinks that the hybrid model gives that an opportunity for our staff to gain confidence, to feel supported, and to give a wee transition into it. So I do think that, I may disrespect or disagree on, it agreed perhaps, but I do believe that we have been responsive. I think you had a question, too, that we didn't answer, which was the staff and for nurses. And we are hiring, as you know, LPNs to support us in that arena. So we feel, we feel supported there, and enough staff. And I'm unaware of, I'm unaware of not having enough staff that we haven't come back, requested it. So we're not going to be shy in, in requesting that should we need anything.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, Mr. Burr.
Thank you.
We have a little bit of room. I don't, just want to let anyone waiting in. Maybe that all, or just at the top there, those people who are waiting?
I'm monitoring that, so I'll keep.
You got it?
You can, Chris. Okay. Mr. Burr?
From a teaching delivery standpoint, if parents decide that having their children go hybrid for a couple of days a week, will they then have the opportunity to go in a hybrid environment full time if indeed we go back to full time instruction on the 29th? Or will that be a different type of environment for people who want to opt out? I guess what I'm trying to say is, if hybrid is, becomes popular enough, will the teachers then be have to teaching live longer than the 29th?
So I have a follow up with that as well. So can someone opt out to not go to class even during hybrid? So can it be full remote?
Technically, yes. Technically, yes. From the State Department, technically, yes. That's not something we're encouraging people to do. And I would really encourage them not to do that. If people are in the, we're in full, our return mode, people can, can decide to go hybrid, or sorry, people can decide to opt out. And if you're calling the hybrid, use the camera to be remote. But we're not, like, we're not asking people to jump ship every five minutes. We will be asking them for a reasonable amount of period of time, perhaps that, as well as some other districts, because people have the opportunity and legal requirement that they want to step away, they can. We've got asked for their support and understanding that the challenges that provides for our staff and also for the children. We just, we'd be appealing to people to, to, to jump into the model and try and stay there if you can. But to give us a reasonable amount of notice to actually make a change, but.
But, but Dr. Adley, am I correct that based on the State Department of Education's guidance, full remote learning is not the same as the delivered curriculum in other models? That full remote learning is a learning experience. And so people should be aware that it's not the same full delivery. We, we might be able to deliver it fully here and there yet. But in general, the guidance from the state is in-person learning and hybrid is a regular, a regular delivery of curriculum through new means. But full remote learning could be something else.
Yes.
Because I do think that's important for parents to know as they make, as they make their decisions and we adjust, like, everyone needs to know the playing field as they decide what's best for their families.
So I would be perfectly honest, I wouldn't be, I would hopefully, if we could, I'd want everybody to come back in the models that were suggested. The conundrum you put yourself in, or the state puts in a wee bit, someone has to minister that, if this is what people are likely to do, then ethically, we're going to do that the best we possibly can. But not to the point where we want to do, and not to the point that we're advocating that. But at the same time, we don't want to make an miserable experience for people just because they're making a miserable experience. We're not going to do that. But it's certainly not.
So I just want to kind of wrap, not, not wrap up, but to see where we are, because we've had a bunch of new people enter the meeting and come out. So what the superintendent and the administration's plan for school is currently, and then questions can continue, is that school starts September 3. It will be a hybrid return, which means that you, there will be two days of school, that your child is in school, two days of remote learning, and every Friday is a half day. We will then on the 29th, go to full time in-person learning, which still has Friday as a remote half day for the year. There will be cameras in the classroom, and that is why when your child is out of school, that's how there will be a delivery of instruction, both with synchronous and asynchronous learning. Sorry, I'm reading off my notes. Grading will continue and remain as normal, anticipating this whole return to school on the 29th. We now have metrics for when schools and towns will open. To Mr. Sealy's point, at the moment, we are balancing, balancing both qualitative and quantitative measures. And that's how we've come up with this plan. But after the 29th, we will be following the, the data as it relates to health. And the Health Department will also put up and have grids to understand what to do in different scenarios.
Tara?
I don't know. Oh, Dave. Yes. I'm sorry. I can't see you, but I hear you.
Yeah, well, I'm making progress. So thank you. I just had a couple of quick comments and a question. Just as a comment, as a board member, I mean, this process is very frustrating. The governor's really taking this out of the loop and sort of remove the board local control. As a parent, going back at a hybrid model, as a parent, you know, to working parents, you know, this is very difficult. It's, you know, not really welcome news. So I'm disappointed. And to that point, to John Sealy's question earlier, asking about some of the qualitative information, Dr. Adley, can you provide any sort of quantitative information of that qualitative? Because I heard a number of inputs. I heard it was parents. And then I heard it was various different unions. And I guess what I'm trying to just, you know, learn here, is this decision being made in the best interest of our students and their learning? Or would it be fair to say this is made in the best interest of the unions and the input you've received from them? So if you give some numbers as to how that information came in qualitatively, in order for you to make the, or quantitatively to make the qualitative decision, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, well, David, again, it's based on follow up discussions that I've had with the, our various constituents and trying to be responsive to those. You know, when you're talking about a pandemic health crisis, You know, when you're talking about a pandemic health crisis. Um. I'm not gonna be the one who's separating uh an adult life from a student life. Um, anybody's life from from anybody's life, they're both equally as valuable. Um. And we always make decisions in the best interest of our of our students.
Right, but now to to that point. Yeah, we mentioned that we have.
Dave, let's let Al uh the Dr. Adley finish, then you absolutely can have a follow up.
I certainly.
I'm sorry, I thought he had taken a break, my mistake.
Oh, fine, I'll finish up. Um, this is uh I certainly do not believe that our our learn experience has been compromised. Um, but this is this is one situation where the interest of both people. Um, uh pandemic health crisis, I think, are equally valued. But anyway, I'll go ahead.
Sorry, um, take your dinner. I I agree that, you know, this is pandemic, I'm certainly not an expert. Um, I I know we do have experts at the state. I know the experts came out with a model. I know our numbers are well within the model, and yet we're disregarding what the experts said. So, you know, again, that just leads to the confusion and, you know, what what interest is being served when the experts tell us we're within the range? And yet we defer. Uh, and I I just, you know, uh I I really appreciate the enthusiasm with the last meetings and. Your desire to get everybody back in in school, uh and it's just disappointing to me tonight to hear that that's not the path we're taking forward.
I respect that, um but let me be very clear, uh the local health experts do support this model.
Right, I heard there was input as well, but the the model propagated by the state, uh we're within that one, correct?
Oh, yes, very much so.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, uh, just again, thank you, Dr. Adley. I realize we've been peppering you for 90 minutes on this and and I'm I hope you don't feel second guessed. I just, I think I just the the phrase man plans, God laughs, just keeps going through my head. Um, but I'm glad we we have you as a great leader because I think we have to be fluid and and things are going to change weekly, daily, monthly. And 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 it's great that we have someone who understands and has experience on how to deal. You know, you've never dealt with this, but you have experience on where to draw from for other things. So for that, I think I and I hopefully the rest of the community is eternally grateful. Um, sp- spinning back to something you mentioned before and and uh not a not as important, but maybe it is, is is sports. You mentioned that football may be proposed be going into the spring. Um, is that just football or is that all sports? Secondly, is that is this all is sports going to be a CIAC decision or is that anything we have local control of? And third, if we have local control, what does hybrid do for sports?
All the questions, Beth, uh for uh currently, the the CIAC just this afternoon uh voted to move uh football to the spring. So as far as I'm aware, it is only pertaining to. The sport of football at this particular point. Um, if if that can change, uh again, that I that I think that there's discretion of food that uh. Can can actually sports actually survive in the uh in the fall season period, any sport. Um, I will make it clear, it is a local decision, just because CIAC, um I don't happen to always agree with CIAC to be honest with you. Um, and it is a it is a a local decision. I mean, a board could take a local decision to cancel all the sports. I mean, it could, I um. Uh, I have sort of walked the line with it a little bit. Um, I actually think it would be cleaner and a an easier uh a cleaner message if there wasn't. But I've walked the line a little bit, recognizing the importance of sports, recognizing, I'll call it, even the social emotional learning associated with it for many of our. Our our athletes and our children that that is helpful in that context. So I've tried to straddle that fence um a little bit, but to answer your question directly, it is a local that a local control. Uh, decision to opt in after, I will call that, but but to make a decision, you could make that decision and just pull it along. Um, I have not recommended that consciously. Um, uh, we've tried to follow the the CIAC guidelines where we are able, um and where it seems to make sense and reasonable. Uh. It seems, I use that term reasonable because I think if things are reasonable, it's uh perhaps it resonates with people. Um, but that's what we've tried to do. Um, so technically, it is a local decision in that matter.
Mr. Seeny.
I'm not sorry, the hybrid question? How does the hybrid question work with?
Oh, uh, if if we're in hybrid, um, there's much consternation about that, Dennis, um among superintendents. Look, if the state had set up a scenario where you can go into hybrid, remote or otherwise. Uh. That's that's what they have determined, therefore people can play and participate if we're in those modes essentially. It's not as if if you're in a hybrid mode and decide to do opt out or whatever, then you're not gonna be able to fight. No, we're not getting into that.
Uh, Mr. Seeny.
Sorry, and just a follow up to that, what about the extracurriculars, Dr. Adley? And where do they, the other extracurriculars, I mean, sports?
Uh, the other, the other extracurriculars, uh, we had determined that as best as possible, that um. Uh, we would do do those remotely, uh because they can transition real quickly into remote, should we go remote, that you would be out. Um. Uh, we, I mean, that's basically the the recommendation we had uh place here, uh sort of discussing the last meeting.
And then another unrelated follow up to something uh Ms. Docman said earlier. With that we were, if we were to go back to full school learning or or in person learning for the for the school year, that it would. Be the half day Friday uh model throughout the year. Is it's if if things flame out and we're looking at a spring semester, can that change? Or are we wedded to that concept going through uh the remainder of the?
I mean, ultimately, ultimately, anything can change. Um, uh, we do have, you know, we have some PLC time built into schedules anyway, so it's not too different in some in some ways. Um, but uh we'll continue to to want to have uh professional learning uh for for staff. So I think uh and that's gonna be tremendously helpful as we as we go through, I think. We'll also want to continue to clean the building where we can. Um. So I think that's I still think that that would be a useful experience if we're in that in that mode. Definitely, it's actually what we did last year when we were doing the remote learning.
Uh, Mrs. Ritchie.
Sorry, I just wanted to go back to sports and specifically DHS. If we're in the hybrid model, which we will be at the start of school. Um, and it looks at this point only that football is postponed to the spring. How will practices work since only half the population will be there Monday, Tuesday? And half the population will be there Wednesday, Thursday, and then essentially nobody there on Fridays? How how will practices then be structured or just expecting all those athletes to re come to campus at the end of the school day that aren't on campus?
Uh, so so that and 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 full transparency to you, I haven't considered that the that it's half or half. We will follow the CIAC guidelines for cohort, which is like 15 kids or something. And so that means that if they have to commit at 15 one day and 15 the next day, then that's what we'll do. Um, if it means that there's a way of them uh keeping the small groups and uh adhering to the guidelines by them coming in, then that's what we can do.
So yeah, I I as I've pressed on this idea a lot up at the state level. There is a rationale in the sense that when you are enrolled in public schools, you are. Allowed to participate in that high school's program. So if you went to Fitch, you're still allowed to come back and be part of a team. If you were outplaced for some reason, but able to participate in an extracurricular or something at high school, you are still eligible. And so I believe, and I think, given that it's new times, every theory can be tested. I think the going theory is even if you are a remote lone learner that day. And there is an extracurricular or program running, you are eligible to participate in that program. And that's kind of the theory I've been heard for. I have heard, people can choose to take it or leave it, for why you might be remote one day, but available and allowable by state law for practice. Um, I think I saw Mr. Janine's and someone else's, I'm sorry, but Mr. Janine and then whomever, please raise your hand again.
Thanks, Tara, just to kind of follow up on Deb and John Seeny. Alan, so could you talk a little? I've heard from folks that have kids that are in theater and music and their ability to get together and do what they love. Um, and the whole equity conversation around the sports and, you know, the amount of kids participating on the fields and practices and stuff like that. So a little update on those type of programs.
Yeah, um, our new music director, uh, is looking at ways that we can uh uh do. Whatever programs in that regard that we can do within the actual uh constraints that we have. So we will participate in those programs where we're able. Um, and in some cases, we may not be able to do that, just given the constraints and guidelines that we have to adhere to under the under the arts in particular. Um. So where we can do it, uh we will do it. Where we can't, uh, we we will look at doing things differently and remotely, that's the way we have uh actually the way we had uh this past spring. Um. But when there are specific guidelines that are are um our new our new director, um our department head, uh, will be adhering to. And Chris, I do want to talk, and Chris, do you want to talk anymore about that? And and your domain is is uh the theater and the arts. But basically, I mean, we're gonna do what we can with within the guideline. But do you know where that stands right now, Chris, just for a wee update?
Uh, the hardest part to manage is anything uh related to singing. Uh, new aerosol studies uh have been released and um. Right now, 12 feet, it continues to be uh the magic number. Uh, but as soon as you have a choir of 50 people all distance at 12 feet around all sides, you can't hear each other sing anymore. So there's some challenges there. Uh, but as far as uh after school clubs and activities, the the way we uh wrote the plan was um where possible, they would be remote and where it's safe. Uh, similar to athletics, if we could provide those conditions, we could let some of those things continue. Uh, but as of right now, I would say a traditional musical would be something very challenging um to pull off.
Mr. Burke.
Uh, first, Dr. Adley, uh, I know that there have been pointed questions tonight and some of them have come from me, but don't make the mistake to think that. Any of us don't fully appreciate the immense amount of work that you and your staff have done, the immense amount of pressure that you are under. This is literally rewriting the book from scratch, which is uh an extraordinarily difficult uh thing to do. So uh, so please, 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 uh, you know, understand that. And uh, I would just uh request as as we go forward, if we feel that we're. Coming to the point of the 29th where it's going to be something different than full. You know, full in person learning, that we have a pretty comprehensive and exhaustive set of factors and data that are driving. That decision, and I understand what you're saying here tonight, and I I think it is a good way to address parental and teacher concerns. Because the teachers matter to us. We have children that are ascending into those schools and we want them as safe as the teachers. Uh, but just going forward, if there's going to be a a shift to a a hybrid all the time or something else. That we have comprehensive data and reasoning uh behind it. But I understand what you're doing now in this choice and and why.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Burke, and honestly, I'd just see the the board tonight uh doing its uh due diligence. Uh, and I'm expecting nothing less, to be honest with you, to appreciate that, but thank you, sir.
Uh, Mrs. Ritchie.
So I wanted to go back to facilities and the results of the study. And you had mentioned some rooms did not comply. And I was wondering if we could get more detail on the results of that study. Thank you.
Yeah, um, some of the rooms that didn't like didn't uh comply, didn't necessarily come from the study. I can't rule them out that they're not in the study because I have not seen the study as of today. Um, but I know we've identified some other rooms uh that are are tough in terms of ventilation. And we've we have uh. Uh, come up with a mitigation strategy for those, and that might be moving the teacher, um, and includes a variety of things. But uh, yeah, that 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 document, we'll public document anyway. Um, uh, so I just haven't seen the content properly yet. I don't know if Mr. Rood saw anything this morning, but um, don't worry, I'm gonna look at that tomorrow.
So I, yeah, I would just echo Deb and um, Mr. Roodel and Mr. Lynch, let the board know the results of it. If there's any concerns, if there's any associated costs in in I by identified needs. Um, I certainly think we want all of our classrooms as safe as as we can possibly make them. Mrs. McCannan.
Related to that, um, I I have a couple of questions about some of the finances. And I was wondering if we could use the finance subcommittee to go into more detail on some of this, these line items. Uh, you know, what's FEMA reimbursable, things like that. Um. But what we're doing with those, what the actual cost of teachers is, you know, for extra um sections that Deb just referred to. I think that it's important tonight to focus on the learning, teaching and learning aspects of this plan. Um, and so I'd love to use the finance subcommittee to talk uh in more detail about some of the numbers.
So not only can you use it, that's the subcommittee's job, so absolutely. Uh, Mrs. Ritchie.
No, that was that was actually my next question as well. So I just, I really think in the full board needs to get more detail on the financials. So I'm hoping that um we see more expanded information than what we have right now in our presentation from tonight. And I'm happy as the chair of the finance committee to help expedite that process as well. But I think the full board, as soon as we can have it, needs to see what exactly is behind all these numbers. And the the other thing I I want to say is just thank you, Dr. Adley, and thank you, administration, all the hard work. I know it's a very fluid, challenging, unprecedented time, and I think everyone's working hard and doing a great job. And we're we're doing the best we can for our kids, for our teachers and our staff. The other thing I just would like to mention real quick is communication is key. And I would, my recommendation is more frequent, more detailed, and I think you touched upon that a little bit tonight. And I think it's important to make sure that we are communicating with our parents and our community as frequently as we possibly can. Thanks.
Uh, we did have um, Mr., I won't let him up. I'm telling not to pull him up right now, but we have like four other slides that show the detail of each of those things, but we'll we'll keep that for a uh a subcommittee.
I would recommend meeting as a subcommittee, going through in detail, then bringing it to the board. Because then um the board members on that finance committee will be pretty steeped in it and will help facilitate that conversation. Uh, Mr. Burke.
Related to Deb's point, but focusing on policy as a policy chair. If there are any tests or revisions or things that in this environment that uh from your perspective need uh review and change. And I've been looking through them myself, but if there are things that we need to rush up for that committee to consider and bring forward. Uh, we are and I am ready to do that.
Thank you. I saw on there, Mr. Maroney.
And with that, facilities, to to go through the report, I think we should meet as well to discuss and and talk about the facilities and how we're going to handle. Those going forward and and to echo Mrs. Ritchie's point. Um, communication, as we said in the spring, is key here, and I appreciate you you having the slides on there. But we can never over communicate on in this process, so thank you in events.
Um, the last thing I'd just like to touch upon, because the board received a couple of emails. Um, and and I did respond to those parents, but Dr. Adley, um, if if there needs to be more color. There was some talk about um what happens if parents choose to homeschool groups of kids. I'd just like to be clear with the public, should should people choose to make those decisions? Homeschooling is allowable by state statute, but then you are unenrolling in the public schools. And so that's governed by a a a separate set of um regulations and laws. And so we got a couple of questions of, well, what happens when someone does this? How does it work? That that actually wouldn't be the board's domain, and I don't believe it would be the administration's domain, but I'm happy to let you answer. But I just want to be clear, should people start to make those decisions for their kids that is outside of the public school system? Um, and so what we're doing right now is describing what the public school system will be like for children who are enrolled in our schools. Um, and we we welcome all children to be here with us. But since we did receive uh a little bit of a succession of emails on that issue, I just want to address it publicly. Is there anything?
No, but uh um, uh, I'm certainly have not mentioned this. Um, uh, because I'm not encouraging it, but I certainly do want people to be doing homeschooling whenever writing, I believe, an excellent education. Um, but should people have to do that, that is an option. Um, I'm also, we've also heard about the sort of hubs of people getting together and can we accommodate the schedule? We just can't accommodate, uh, we're we're just not gonna be able to accommodate those independent. Uh, I appreciate the creativity and the thinking, but but we just can't accommodate those those requests.
Uh, Mrs. Ritchie.
So just on that, um, and specifically on, I they're calling them educational pods. So what's preventing families from getting together and creating a pod if we are completely in remote learning? Are they prohibited from doing that? Can they do that? Why wouldn't they be able to do that? Why wouldn't they be able to create a pod for kids that are in the same class?
Uh, it it, yeah, the probably no different than right now. People want to come together and have a study group or otherwise, um, call it what you will, but I can't uh. Uh, the school district can't accommodate the request to move people around to accommodate them, but we're we're. Uh, there's no end to that. But if people want to get together in a socially distanced way and make responsible decisions, but we're not gonna be asking. but we're not going to be asking teachers to accommodate their requests coming from a pod in any really capacity, to be honest with you.
Mr. Maroni.
And just a comment to echo something you said earlier, Mrs. Akman, is, you know, thank you for the public for writing in. You know, we, we read all of your emails. They're, they're very informative and very well thought out. And we appreciate the time and effort you've spent. And, and hopefully we've asked and answered all of the questions that you've sent in. I believe we have, but hopefully we have. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would say we appreciate it. We know people have different opinions. I will say on this issue, I am not sure that we can make everyone 100% happy. What I am impressed and proud to hear tonight, and I expect nothing less, but that our administration has put children first. And that includes making sure teachers, buildings, everyone is ready to do that. And I, and I do think our kids who are going through this extraordinary time in ways that we as adults probably can't even imagine. It's heartening to know they have educators looking out for them to really try to put their educational interests at heart. It is not easy. I'm sure we all, you know, could design something for our own families that would meet their needs. But, but I appreciate that you're looking into the needs of all children. And for those parents who, who have reached out, I hope you do see both the board and the administration have taken your thoughts into account. And I think, I think what I would really implore, and this is me as a board member, but any board member can either echo or feel free to disagree, we would implore your partnership on this. We, we understand that this is not going to please everyone, but we've asked that no plan is. And so we are getting through this together. Darien has weathered a pandemic, a storm, and many other things together. We do better when we do it together. And so I would just say, as we approach September, it's, it's our kids who are listening to us. It's our kids who are going to show up on that first day, either in the computer or in our schools. So let's show them that we support them. Let's show them that we believe in them. And let's really kind of come together as a town and try to manage this in the best way possible. I'll entertain any other questions at this point. And I imagine some will come as you go home tonight and think about this more. You can always send them in. I see Mr. Burke and then Mrs. McCannan.
Just to echo our chair's comment, I think it's vitally important that the parents, and I'm a parent as well, partner with us. I was struck earlier by Alicia's comments. So many of her sentences started with, we're asking parents, we're asking parents, we're asking parents. And I think the quality of our ability to track this virus and keep our environments in these schools safe is going to depend on parents really partnering with us and, and helping us out. So I echo those comments by our chair.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mrs. McCannan.
I have a couple of other questions that I have received, each of them multiple times from just people out in the community. The first is I've been asked multiple times whether or not, or why we are not planning to test for COVID before we have people enter the school system again. I know we talked about it a little bit last time. And Alicia, you talked about not testing necessarily so much to re-enter, but, but in terms of just having everyone tested before starting. And I wondered if you could answer that. I've received a couple of questions about FERPA and how FERPA works when you are running a classroom that is being live streamed into someone's home. So I wonder if administration could let us know any guidelines they've received about FERPA. I'll give an example. So let's say my five-year-old is struggling to adjust to the classroom environment and leans over and punches Suzie. I don't want a call from Suzie's mom. That's arguably a violation of FERPA. But, you know, Sally's mom called Suzie's mom because she was watching on live stream. So if you could just talk to how FERPA works when we are in the classroom and not in it, I would appreciate it. And thirdly, I think we've talked a little bit about remote learning and what is and isn't on offer for kids who, or families who may feel that they need to exercise that option. Many, in many of the cases, I've heard about our kids who have underlying physical reasons for thinking about that. And so if we could, if, if not this evening, certainly in the upcoming days, provide some significant clarity to those families about what is and what isn't available.
Our basic first question, Jill, was taken under our medical advisors' direction and our director of public health, that actually doing the test for COVID is not that going to be that particularly reliable. And Alicia, again, if you want to elaborate on that, go ahead.
Okay, so the testing is only good for the very moment that you do it. So if somebody gets tested and then goes out and gets exposed, if they have a negative test, they're going to come to school, but now they've been around five other people who they know have COVID, but they can say, I can come to school because I have a negative test. So it, it doesn't provide a lot of security as far as who has it and who doesn't. And if you test, if you test people too early in their, if they don't have symptoms yet, you may get a, a negative test, but then three days later, they could have symptoms as well. So it, it doesn't really help discern who, who has it that's not showing symptoms yet. So we, it's really just not recommended at this time, a universal testing strategy. The other piece is that there, there is a shortage of tests and reagent and, and things like that. So they really are trying to test people who are symptomatic. And there's also false positives, false negatives. So you really, they're saying to really wait until you actually have symptoms. The quick rapid tests that they do, it has a lot of false negatives because it, it requires a lot more viral load to detect, to detect COVID. So the testing, you know, it's, it's good, but it's not excellent. And it's, it's just not specific enough at this time to really, you know, narrow down who has it, who doesn't, and what it makes sense to do. So they really, all the recommendations from the public health department and from the CDC are to test people who are showing symptoms or who have been exposed for a long period of time, like a household contact maybe would be tested, depending on, on how, what's happening in the house. So it really doesn't make sense to just blanket test everybody to determine whether or not they can come back to school.
The FERPA and the live streaming, clearly we've taken, I give it open expectation to do some legal counsel on that matter. And we feel comfortable that we can move forward with that. That doesn't mean to say that as part of our professional learning at the start of the year, that we're not going to address the issues of, of how we implement this and as close to fidelity as possible and how we avoid being tripped up by FERPA or otherwise. So we'll, we'll build that in, but we clearly have taken that under legal counsel. And the clarity of some of the programs for some of our students. Let Shirley perhaps talk about that. I know it's going to come up in some of the Friday meetings that we have scheduled, but Shirley, if you want to just talk a wee bit about that.
Certainly, I think to Jill's question, though, I think FERPA has been taken under advisement and counsel. And I think that students will not be identified, you know, the way the cameras are focused on classrooms and what we've done. I think it happened during our remote learning while we were in e-learning also. There were streaming and live cameras, I mean, live zooming, let's say, in the classroom. And we followed the guidelines consistent with not revealing who students were. But, but certainly we're mindful of it, we consider it. And I think all of our teachers and our related service providers are trained in how we need to properly address when we are on camera or if we're on Zoom.
You helped me. Am I correct in understanding that similar districts to us? And, and, or I can say it this way, districts that have a capacity, cameras inside the classroom are becoming the, are becoming the mode. We are not the only ones on this. This is, this is now becoming, given the pandemic, a mode of, of delivery of education for, for people who have the opportunity to.
You're certainly not, this figure certainly not either an island with the use of cameras in the classroom. Their, their most in this particular area, or many in this particular area, are using the camera as a source for, for instruction.
Okay. Any last questions? Recognizing, I think there's going to be lots of questions as we move forward, but any questions on understanding the superintendent's plan? We certainly have chances for follow-up at our upcoming meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled prior to the start of school. But is there anything else that anyone wants to, on understanding the superintendent's and the school's next step? Mr. Burke.
I apologize, not a question, but a comment just based on the last topic. And that is perhaps a great event for professional learning would be to help our good teachers understand how to teach, knowing that there are a bunch of parents watching. There have never been parents in the classroom now. And now with this hybrid environment, there will be. So that might be a great topic to help them with. And also send the message to our parents. You know, let's give our teachers a break as you, as you tune in and watch school. No parent has ever done that in history, and they're going to be doing that now. So everybody just, you know, take a breath and, and let's give our teachers some support and help as we go through this intrusive, in a way, learning environment.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, we will move on to public comment. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave some longer pauses so people can come in or out. We've been able, we've been able to admit some new people. But Dr. McGeggen, we will, if you could let us know, public comment. There's an age speaker.
We do have a, okay, Erin, you are first up, unmuted.
And just a reminder for speakers, if you can identify your name and address for the board.
Erin Lumpkin, 5 Archer Lane. I had a couple of questions based on what was mentioned.
I'm sorry, Erin, can you just spell your last name for the minutes?
Yes, it's Lumpkin, L-U-M-P-K-I-N.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Lumpkin.
I know they said that a pause, the testing wouldn't be used for strategies for returning to school. But is that something that will be used in the event that a positive test is done? Will they then have to have a negative test to come back to school? Is my first question. Another question in regards to the cameras in the classrooms. I'm assuming parents will only have access to the classrooms when their students are home, not while they're actually in the classroom learning. Is that correct?
Mrs. Lumpkin, the board receives comment, but, but doesn't respond. So we'll take all your questions down.
Okay, thank you so much.
Did you have any more?
And then the last and final question, I know it's been brought up several times, but siblings, multiples, there's been issues of parents wanting them to be in the same classroom for purposes of e-learning and ease of e-learning at home during hybrid or 100% e-learning. So I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lumpkin. Mrs. McGeggen, Dr. McGeggen, sorry. I know Mrs. McGeggen, keep doing it.
Okay, Jocelyn, you are unmuted.
Okay, hi, me again, Jocelyn Delancey, president of Darien Education Association. Some things are mentioned, and I just want to make sure that I clarify some of our concerns. First and foremost, the union's push is only for safety. We did not push for a model in any way, shape, or form, other than the fact that if we go back in any model, we want to make sure that our building is safe for students and that our protocols are safe for students especially, and teachers as well. That's the first thing that I want to make sure is clear, as well as if it is safe enough for us to be in our classrooms, particularly during lunch. And we don't have a capacity issue, I would invite any Board of Ed member to come in and, and join 5G for lunch at any time. The next thing that I would like to just state about the robust learning is the live streaming. We have some really serious concerns. FERPA is one. I'm not sure how we protect our students' privacy from being seen on a video camera if students are in the classroom learning and other students are watching. Behaviors will happen, masks will be, you know, an issue of trying to figure out how we get people comfortable. Parents will be able to watch. That will be hard for us to manage, and we have not had training on it. We do not know how that will work. And we want to ensure a strong and vibrant teaching for both our students at home and in the classrooms. We want our kids who are learning in school to feel safe sharing their thoughts without being necessarily watched or monitored. That's something we haven't talked about, about, you know, our students who are taking risks academically in a brand-new setting, in rows and with masks on and in ways that we've never taught before. If we are back in the buildings, and trust me, our teachers want to be in person with our kids. But you guys all have to remember that what we do in these classrooms back with social distancing requirements is not going to look or be the same. And we just want to make sure that whatever teaching plans we put in place, the teachers stand behind, that we have a voice in the conversation. And the live streaming, we still have many, many questions about. Other school districts are doing live streaming, but many have decided that it is not the best practice and that there are other ways to do this. Also allowing teachers to teach remotely from home. If I, if we can provide some virtual experiences that we did, I'm sure that we can find a way to teach remotely for teachers who need to be out and safe and for students who need to be out and safe. And so I just want to carry those things on and to remind you of those. And, you know, to keep us as part of the discussion because we still have many questions that have yet to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancey. Dr. McGeggen.
Mr. Greg Rambling, or Grambling, sorry. You are unmuted.
Hey, so Greg Grambling from 11 Blueberry Lane.
I'm sorry, could you just spell your last name? Thank you.
So I guess, thanks for taking my questions and comments. I know that obviously Dr. Adley and others have definitely been going through a lot the past bunch of months. I guess I had a few questions and comments. One was just in terms of the hybrid decision-making process, how, how you all are thinking about that and why it seems like that suddenly changed from the last time we heard from you all. It kind of seems like a lose-lose-dynamic where now you've got kids who are not going back to school full-time. You've got teachers who are theoretically still exposed. And you've got parents who are now having to manage those kids now three days a week effectively, including if they've got dual incomes at home. Yeah, have you thought about giving the parents a choice? And, you know, giving them a selection and taking a poll on whether the parents want to send their kids back or not? And, you know, giving them an option of one or the other. And I, and I express that in particular, given we've got some of our neighboring towns like Norwalk, who are sending their kids back five days a week in person. Just any thoughts around that would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Grambling.
Okay, Louise Waylett Brown, you're unmuted.
Firstly, I'd like to say to Dr. Adley, Board of Education, all those teaching staff members have been involved. I'm so sorry that you've had this loss of summer. And apologies to all of your families who have seen so little of you.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you just, we just need your name and your address.
Louise Waylett Brown, W-A-Y-L-E-T-T, Hiking Brown, 102 Colony Road.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to repeat that very, my family's very grateful to Dr. Adley, the Board of Ed, and all members of staff who've been involved with starting to teach in the medical profession, not just the education profession. And we understand the complexity. I can't even begin. And we're extremely grateful and thank you to your families for allowing you to spend what has been most of your summer on this. I do have a few questions, which I know you can't answer, so I'll try and run through them. Maybe you can comment on them in the, on the frequently asked question sheet that you have. And the first one's very quick. The SAT that's scheduled to take place at Darien High School on September 26th. The SAT that's scheduled to take place at Darien High School on September 26th. If we're now in hybrid mode, does it mean, if we're not going back until September 29th, does it mean that that September 26th SAT is now canceled? If that is the case, how quickly could we let Darien High School students know? Because there aren't any spots available at neighboring schools, and they may need to travel far afield to try and find that testing, if it's available anywhere? So that's the first question. Temperature-taking, I'm sorry, I didn't manage to get in. I was logged in on the first link, and I sat waiting to get in. And then I got in on the second link. So I'm sorry if I missed the first part of the meeting and you addressed this. But the temperature-taking at home, I did read all 104 pages of Dr. Adley's notes. So if I've got it correctly, families are going to be taking their own child's temperature before they arrive at school. And obviously, that concerns me slightly. I don't know if everyone has access to a thermometer in our district. We do, but, you know, certainly high schoolers, a lot of them very independent, maybe running out the door before a parent even gets to be able to take their temperature. I was wondering if there are funds available to move to a thermal imaging scenario at school entrance points, where the school itself can monitor on a thermal imaging basis, you know, who's coming in with the temperature and who isn't? Then cohorts, if I had a question, and again, apologies if you've already addressed this, cohorts, if a student, and again, I'm largely referring to the high school, as that's where my students.
Mr. Brown, I just want to let you know, you have about 30 seconds left on the three-minute time limit.
Okay. Cohort, if the student who is testing positive, and that cohort then has to also quarantine with that teacher, does that cohort of that class then shift to the alternate online hybrid learning? Or are they just shut out from learning for the 14 days? I'm very concerned, you know, for seniors who are going to be reporting first quarter grades. And it's important that they don't miss a single day of school in that first quarter.
I do need to, I do need to let you know you surpassed time. But if you want to put anything in an email, we will send it to the administration and all board members. Sorry about that.
Okay. Marissa Herbert, you are unmuted.
Hi there, Marissa Herbers, H-E-R, B as in boy, E-R-S as in Sam, 5 Coach Lamp Lane. I'm concerned about our students' mental health. And I would like to be able to prepare my, my kids going back into school and give them a very clear idea of what they can anticipate. I have to imagine that it could be quite a shock for students returning to a very different environment. So is there at some point that we could, as parents, really get a day-in-the-life view of what to prepare our children for? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbers.
Okay, Mr. David Gray, you are just unmuted.
Hi, this is Laura Pesh Gray, and we live at 131 Holmes Avenue. I have a couple of questions. One is, why is the transition from hybrid? I understand the hybrid perspective is to give teachers and students and a comfort level. But why go, why is there such a short transition from a hybrid to person? My concern is that having everybody back in the classroom will elevate the risk of people contracting. It will reduce the ability to social distance. That's why it was originally three feet, because there's not enough space if everybody goes back to school. Second question is, and I'm speaking on behalf of a friend who is thinking about doing, is opting out altogether. Mrs. Akman had mentioned that a total remote learning will not provide a full curriculum for students, and that was surprising to me. So I would love to hear more about that for myself, as well as for this friend of mine. And lastly, when Alicia spoke to one symptom, if a child is coughing in the classroom, that it would be taken, it wouldn't be taken as, I thought, any symptom. And I read the 104-page document. I thought any one symptom that was COVID-related would be looked at as a potential risk. But it doesn't sound like that would be adhered to. So I would love to have a more clear understanding of how you would isolate and protect everyone from being safe. And, David, do you have any other questions? And one last thing is, in the 104-page document or six-page document, it said that teachers were going to be, kids were going to be moving to specials versus teachers. And I just thought that would increase the risk of just the quantity of people moving from classroom to classroom, as opposed to a teacher moving and minimizing the social distancing and the possible exposure. Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your hard work, Dr. Adley, and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pesh Gray.
Okay, that was the last raised hand.
Okay, thank you to everyone who tuned in. This meeting will be posted. We will get that up ASAP. Dr. Adley will finish, will write the school community tomorrow also. Board, thank you. It has been a long summer, but thank you for your diligence and your work and to the administration and teachers. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this evening. Mr. Maroney, so moves. Mrs. Stein, seconds. All in favor? Mr. Brown, I just can't see you.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Mrs. Ritchie, for the minutes. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Would appreciate it. Thank you, night.
Night.